It's a term, that's what it is.
I've seen you doing that for a while.
Right.
Your eyes like that, like the lake of the river, the river flows on. You're like fly over it and you can see the clouds, like the smooth of a wall coming out into this big lake.
Oh, yeah.
Big fish. Moonlit. Which we could call.
Yeah, I have a little, uh, part of it.
I'm, I'm like this stuff.
And it's smoke by my mouth.
Yeah.
You're talking regular.
Yeah, that's your common card.
Oh, yeah.
But I haven't done it for a few years. Actually, it's been like ten years, but I'm learning what I'm learning. We usually do it when they do this farm, like the parker, they come up and make calls and stuff. Sure. Like, we're gonna get a couple of tests or something.
Do you call this regular meeting or call roll?
Mayor Querom?
Here.
Councilmember Swanson?
Here.
Mavory?
Here.
Gomez?
Here.
Newman?
Here.
Please stand and run us in pledge.
The public allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
So, to start tonight, we'll go with a public comment period. And I just wanna, if there's, uh, gonna be some public comment on the OSF Peri Memorial affiliation tonight. Everybody is, uh, anyone is welcome to make whatever comments you wanna make. Uh, we will not be taking questions on the issue tonight. Uh, OSF is not represented. We don't wanna inadvertently or unintentionally speak on their behalf. Uh, that would not be a good thing to do. So, uh, make comments, uh, if you'd like, and, uh, we will note them. Other than that, will we comment, Geraldine? Just need your name.
Hi, I comment this evening-
You can pull that down, Geraldine, if you wanna hit the-
Does it work?
The button, yeah, just hit the button so it turns-
Hello?
Yeah, you got it.
Oh, it's like, it works. Okay, my comment this evening is about the closing of Columbus Street. Uh, the first is safety. If you remember several years ago, we had fires on Main Street. You need access off of Main Street and closing it would be a hazard. The second reason I think it should be left open, you did a nice job on that parking facility. And what will happen, Marion Street will be a traffic jam if cars are coming and going in and out of that parking lot. You sort of frustrate people if they're looking and they have to go even further to get to the parking lot. Those are my two comments.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
You want?
Yeah, just need your name.
Yeah, I'm Rick Brooks. Um, can we talk a little bit about the OSF agreement now? Okay. Um, I'm just curious, um, does anyone here know of a larger, more important decision about economics in Princeton than this decision in the past hundred years? I mean, maybe the sale of Parker Wyman, maybe, I don't know, what else? But it seems to me like this is the most significant economic and probably socioeconomic decision in a century in Princeton. They're one of the largest employers. They're one of the largest institutions, um, community organizations, um, and the discussion has always been about something called affiliation. And, um, it's interesting how the meaning of the word affiliation has been transformed into sale. Um, and the language in the document that I saw, the fifty-five pages, was outright sale of many, many, many assets. So, what I wanna talk briefly about is some of the questions that I have in the very little time that as an interested citizen, um, I'm not even a resident of Princeton, but I really care about that hospital and about its role in the community. But I have a lot of questions. Before I go into those, um, I wanna thank everybody who worked on this agreement, this affiliation agreement. It's a huge amount of work. Just this document alone is a huge amount of work. It's very complex. I think Annette Schnabel, um, did a wonderful job explaining at the time, um, what she perceived to be the challenges of rural healthcare and especially in small towns. Um, and I wanna, I wanna thank everybody who's worked on it. Um, but I also wanna offer some challenges. Um, I'm a believer that in Princeton as a strong town, to stay a strong town, a city like this has to have people working together. And I'll offer a few opinions. I'm not sure enough people work together on this agreement. Um, it's, it's a done deal. It was a done deal, um, more than a year and a half ago, and it will happen, and this is part of a national trend that shouldn't surprise any of us. Small towns, small hospitals, eventually have to figure out a way to survive and protect the quality of their services and their care and maybe even improve it. And I think in the end, and be sure you hear this, in the end, this will be a good thing for Princeton. I wanna commend the work again that's done to make this good for Princeton. But among the questions, and you don't have to answer them tonight, but I hope we can, has anyone done a thorough analysis of the potential economic impact of this sale on Princeton and Bureau County? What happens when, in the interest of having the economies of scale and higher efficiencies in delivering services and products and other things that this agreement will hope to assure, what happens with local providers of those services? In procurement, for example? There are all kinds of things in a sale like this that you look at. This were just any business, you would look at, well, what are the products and services that you're buying? Um, what is the real estate that you're buying? What are the buildings that you're buying? Um, what are the debts and liabilities that you're buying? Has anyone looked at the leakage from the Princeton economy that's gonna happen when this transaction takes place and over the next several years, a three billion dollar medical enterprise does what it's supposed to do, which is deliver high-quality care at a, as reasonable a price as possible? That is their top priority. Whereas in Princeton, I think our top priority would be the best care we can possibly get for people who live here and work here and come here. Those aren't necessarily the same. The larger institution has different needs and methods and strategies for accomplishing their goals. So, number one, I have a suggestion. I think it would be worth someone looking very thoroughly at the leakage from the Princeton economy and not only the tangible things, but the intangible things. One thing that we didn't mention, I didn't mention in the sale of a business is you also buy the goodwill, which is intangible. It's a hundred years of goodwill, a hundred years of history. Um, it's a hundred years of people who were born there and died there and take and suffered there and cured there. Um, part of that history, um, in my own family is my own wife. Her life was saved by Peri Memorial Hospital and, interestingly enough, OSF, working together. They were partners, they were affiliates, they shared services. If OSF had not been there, I think my wife might have died. But they did that when Princeton had its own Peri Memorial Hospital and provided the services that it could, realized that my wife needed better care, immediately put her on the helicopter, and within thirty-six hours, she had a pacemaker put in and came home. Now, that's a great story. That's a great form of collaboration. It's, um, not quite the same, in my opinion, as the hospital being sold, lock, stock, and barrel. And my fifty-some pages of that agreement are all marked up. They're a mess. I can't read my own writing, 'cause there's so many things there that I wonder about. How many things, what are the numbers? I mean, there are several numbers in that fifty-five-page agreement. And they're very open, open-ended. There's a lot of good intentions and promises and hopes, and I circled the words intentions in there. Um, there are a lot of positives that come out of this agreement. But to me, what we need to do, as patients and families and citizens and taxpayers, I'm not even, we don't, I don't even live in the city, but I wanna contribute to this city. So, what we need to do is make sure that when this agreement moves forward, and it will, is that Princeton retains a significant role in as many decisions as possible that relate to the people who live, work, and come here. That means that the community council needs to have active participants. Since we're, the hospital board is now gonna turn into an advisory board with, from what I can see, very little influence beyond, you know, good thinking, people listening to us and so on. There, it's unclear what the role of the board of directors of the hospital will be. Um, the good intention is that there'll be a significant role, but I, I hope we can insist that those participants in the community council, former board members and others, will stay active in ensuring that Princeton has the kind of care and, uh, that the people who live and are employed here, as many of them as possible, can stay here. I know that it was a tremendous effort to ensure that employees of the hospital and contractors and physicians and nurses and so on could have the best possible outcome from this sale of the hospital. It is, um, it's more than an affiliation, it's sale. So, it's not all bad. Uh, there are a lot of good things about it, but I strongly encourage all of you, all of us, to keep our eyes wide open and to play an active, active role in holding the, this very large healthcare institution accountable for the quality of care now and in the future. And be aware that if things don't work out, often, large, much larger corporations decide, we don't need to do that anymore, we're not gonna. Um, there are, there are some lines in this agreement that mention return on investment. Those are the exact words. If they don't get the kind of return on their investment, OSF and any other large institution will reconsider their purchase. So, one, one final thing, I would ask, number one, if you ever get a chance to have an institution this large that has this most influence in the town, you give the public a much better education about what the implications are gonna be. More than a month. There's a line in here that talks about kindness of the essence. I'm astounded that a decision this big can only generate an audience this size, when it says legally and certainly ethically and otherwise, it would have been really helpful and valuable for more people to have a better understanding of this agreement. It may not be a bad agreement, it's the best that we can get. But, um, I think it's fair and right to expect of each other that we give it a more thorough analysis. So, um, I don't, I have a lot of questions, and I'm not gonna list them all tonight, but, um, I would encourage everybody here to talk and listen to each other and talk to people who don't know anything about what's in this agreement. They know nothing. And that's a little frightening. So, um, thank you for the opportunity. Um, I, I'm interested in this over the long term. And I hope that all, everyone here can be as grateful as I am for all the people who worked on this, this agreement, but we can also make the commitment to each other to make sure it, it pays off for everybody in the future. Thanks.
That's right. Any other, uh, public comments?
Yeah.
I'll segue into what he says.
Just need your name.
Oh, Sam Fisher, sorry. Um, I got involved in the process last spring, and I, and I think, what, the point he's bringing up is a lot of the questions could have been answered had the public been involved from the very beginning. Um, this council, the hospital board participated in legal meetings back in November of two thousand nineteen and again on January of two thousand twenty. And those minutes, uh, when I inquired, they were finally released under, I, I'm assuming good advice from council. And when you read those minutes, it's extremely insightful. You find out really the good questions and the thoughts that went into it. And it's unfortunate the public didn't have an opportunity to, to be a part of that meeting and to see those minutes. And unfortunately, those minutes aren't there anymore, they've been taken down. So, he's right, it's a big decision. The people who put work in this thing should be commended, a tremendous amount of work. Just wish the public would have had an opportunity to be engaged from the very beginning. Thanks.
Sam, any other, uh, public comments? Okay, we'll go to then to Commissioner Newman for approval minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on Monday, January fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Motion to the second comments. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavory?
Aye.
Gomez?
Uh, aye, with the change from the Medicare stating that the Medicaid, uh, as far as what I was talking about is as far as reimbursements as well.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. Now, we'll go to approval invoices and City Park Nelson.
For this period of the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices totaling one hundred three thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling two hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling one hundred, I'm sorry, yeah, one hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling six hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and eleven cents. Mayor, all council members have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been second, any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavory?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. We'll go to regular business and City Park Nelson.
In the next order of business, we have, um, the second and final reading of ordinance O dash twenty-one dash double oh one. This is an ordinance authorizing the city of Princeton to enter into an affiliation agreement and a related real estate purchase agreement, um, whereby OSF Healthcare System will operate Peri Memorial Hospital. Uh, again, this is the second and final reading. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O dash two-one dash zero zero one.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments?
I could, Mayor, I do have a couple quick comments. Well, I, I will be voting again on this, uh, in favor of this, uh, tonight. Um, I did receive some community feedback from, uh, individuals questioning how we could have done a better job of, uh, making the public more aware of where we're going with this as far as, um, some of the, the final couple weeks here. Um, one of the things in our stack of bills tonight that we approved was a, um, a, um, a bill from the Bureau County Republican for the, uh, publisher's, uh, certificate of publication. So, we checked the box, but, you know, this was published December twenty-third, and that's the size of the ad that was to the public to let them know about our, our, uh, public hearing, uh, that we had on the Fourth of January. So, I didn't even see this ad, and of course, two days before Christmas, putting it in the back of the paper. Now, I realize there's other ways that the public is made aware of it through social media and some other, um, uh, the hospital's website, but I think we could have done a better job of making the public aware of it. I caught flack over that issue, and there is that ad, it's not very big. Um, the other thing was, um, it's embarrassing that the Bureau County Republican, when they request a copy of that, uh, agreement, they had, uh, were denied it from the hospital, and they had to request it through a FOIA. And I was told that the night that we met for this two weeks ago, that the BCR received it like that afternoon. And so, that's, that's embarrassing too. That, that's, um, that's from the hospital, Pete. Now, you gave her a copy a couple days earlier than that, right? In a, in a press packet? But her request from the hospital wasn't honored until the day of the, of the hearing. Um, so again, you know, I, I think that these are, in some ways, we're, we're looking back, and I think we could have done a better job the past thirty days of making some, uh, better, uh, attempts at making the public aware of it. I, it's not gonna change my opinion on how I'm gonna vote tonight, but I'd just like to say one more thing, and it's a clarification. In this agreement, one of the concerns I think that has been echoed is the community council. So, I appreciate the, the, uh, citizens of Princeton that have worked for the past two years on this project, uh, the, the board members, uh, of the hospital, as well as the foundation board members. But when I read this, I'm, I just have a question here, and I think we can hopefully clarify this. It says here, "The initial members of the community council shall be those persons nominated by the Peri Memorial Hospital Board of Directors prior to the closing date. One person nominated by the Peri Memorial Hospital Foundation Board of Directors prior to the closing date, and one person nominated by the City Council of Princeton prior to the closing date." And I, I take it the, our, our nomination or the mayor's nomination, it would be a council member, or is it a person, community at large?
Probably community at large, would be my guess. But we can talk about that.
Okay, and I think that's important, you know, the, the, the comments that, uh, Rick Brooks made, you know, I think that if somebody liked, uh, Rick Brooks, be interested in being on that council, it would give him the opportunity to make sure that he feels good about where those funds are going and, and be more involved in it. And I appreciate Rick's involvement in the community with all the other things he does. And then, the final thing it says, when it, on that paragraph says, "And, and approved by the OSF Board." So, I'm presuming that all three of those entities, the Peri Memorial Hospital Board of Directors, uh, giving one person, the Peri Memorial Hospital Foundation giving a person, uh, to go on that board, and one person nominated by the City Council of Princeton prior to the closing, and approved by the OSF Board. So, they approve all three of those entities, you think? They do. And then the final say, okay. All right, very good. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the community, uh, involvement as far as the past couple weeks. I, I had a lot of people that approached me either by telephone call or, or on the street with just, just concerns over that maybe we could have done a better job communicating to the community the past couple weeks, that's all. We learned, we learned.
Yeah, I would, uh, cut just up comments. Uh, you know, I appreciate Rick's comments about the partnership that, uh, you know, his wife experience between Peri Memorial Hospital and OSF. And, uh, you know, actually, even while there's gonna be a, a new name, most likely, affixed to the hospital, uh, that partnership doesn't go away. You're still gonna have the same employees at Peri Memorial Hospital, and they'll be working with OSF, obviously, it'll be OSF. But that partnership's not going anywhere. It's gonna be strengthened and, uh, under, under a new ownership realm. You know, and, uh, as far as the, uh, um, you know, I, I suppose, you know, we could always, we can always do better at what we do in getting information out. I will say in the last year, year and a half, that we've been working with OSF, um, I think, you know, we have done everything. We've gone above and beyond in trying to get information out to the public. There's been stories in the VCR, there's been letters to the editor, I think, in the VCR. There's been social media, a lot of social media. I've been on WZU multiple times talking about this affiliation. Perry's website, the city's website, uh, the, the council meetings, the, uh, you know, when, when OSF came up here, and we had PowerPoint presentations and speakers, I think that happened a couple of times. You know, we can do everything we can to get that information out, and, and we always invite questions, you know, it's on social media, it's on Perry's website, inviting questions from the community to get involved. I mean, we're a small community, most everybody, I mean, everybody knows everybody, you know, I, my, my phone number is, is in the, in the phone book, I got, you know, my, my, uh, uh, social media account, my, uh, uh, email address, you know, we all have them. We all could have been contacted by anybody at any time for anything on this, and we would have been more than happy to provide that information. You know, we can, we can put this information out, but we have no control over people searching for it, reading it, or acting on it. And that's unfortunate, but we have, I, we've gone, I think, well above and beyond, uh, getting this information out and trying to get people to, to be engaged. So, I, I don't, uh, uh, don't know anything else more to say on that, but I think we've, we've really gone above and beyond in trying to, uh, get the public involved in this, but, you know, it is what it is. Any other comments? This motion's been second, call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavory?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. We'll go to, uh, City Manager Report.
In your pocket is the Princeton Police Pushing Report for November of two thousand twenty. If you have questions on that, please let me know. We had the fire department's November twenty twenty at the last meeting. Uh, I'll give you a quick update on the Thompson Street Sewer Project, as some of you have seen some of the action down there already. Uh, Chamlin began, uh, putting out the construction stakes today and they'll, uh, do some work tomorrow. Uh, the contractor for all the project is Superior Excavating, you've probably seen them around town before. Uh, the resident engineer inspector is Noe Quintana, is how you pronounce his last name, um, from Chamlin, so he should be there, uh, daily on site if there's ever any questions or any concerns. Or if you do have questions and concerns, let us know, and we can get ahold of him. Uh, the bid amount on that project, if you remember, was four hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty cents actually came in under budget. The timeline to complete it, we're looking at four to five weeks for that project. Um, they'll be installing one thousand two hundred and thirty feet of twenty-four-inch sanitary sewer, and the project limits will go from Fifth Street to Sixth Street, so you'll see some closures, uh, between those streets during the daytime. The main purpose of the project, as you're probably well aware, is for, to reduce and eliminate the basement backups and sewer, um, surcharging by allowing for more unrestricted flow during normal flow, especially during major storm events. So, that's gonna be a welcomed, welcome project by many. Um, the street will be opened before and after each workday, so you can, you'll, you should be able to get through during those times. Um, trenching will be topped off with gravel and allowed to settle for, um, a period of time with possible option of maybe doing temporary paving over top of it until it's wholly settled, uh, so we can get it resurfaced. So, we're looking at about a four to five week construction period here going forward, um, if we start digging next week. So, just excuse the mess, but the end project should be well worth it. I think many of us will believe that, hopefully. It'll solve a lot of issues, so. Um, uh, last thing I wanted to touch on for the council, 'cause sometimes, uh, it gets kind of brushed to the side. Uh, I wanna do a quick recap of some of the revenue receipts that we're getting in, in the community right now. So, I'm actually glad there's quite a few people here to hear some of this. Uh, if you follow our finances, uh, we are receiving motor fuel tax, uh, as we always have in the past, the last year, and then this year, we're getting some extra allotments. So, just to touch on, um, just as a comparison to last year to this year, uh, to date for motor fuel, we've, uh, already received three hundred and seventy-five thousand and, um, two hundred and thirty-three dollars up till through January. Uh, last year as a whole, we, we, we had taken in two hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So, there's an increase in motor fuel, so again, you're gonna there's an increase in motor fuel, so again, you're going to start to see more of those street projects happening this summer, so excuse the mess, but there's a lot of projects that are going to be happening, I think most people are very welcoming of this. And included in, not included in, but in addition for, for that funding for the streets is our quarter percent sales tax. We are up about, on an average per month, about four thousand dollars in sales tax for that quarter percent. So we're seeing an increased amount going into that street tax as well, so we're averaging right now about three hundred and thirty-six thousand per year coming in for those projects, so again, a lot of street projects, we should be seeing a lot of construction again this summer. Just a couple of other ones, our local share of state use tax, which is where we're seeing the Wayfair tax, which is your online tax that we're starting to collect locally now. We are seeing an increase in those funds coming in and averaging probably about three to four thousand extra per month on that, so again, a little bit, a few more thousand dollars always adds up in the end. Our income taxes, our local share of income tax is also up and averaging about, I'd say, in comparison to last year, about three thousand dollars more overall, so not huge, but it's still something. I'm going to touch on a really interesting one, because with COVID and, and keeping in mind that the sales tax, where they see all these increases and we have COVID going on, so that's even a better thing. The video gaming tax is one that we kind of forget about, but we do get quite a bit of revenue from the gaming. But gaming's been shut down, so how do we balance that loss in revenue? In this last year, we've only been open for gaming one, two, three, four, five, six months so far. And we have collected almost eight thousand dollars in those months. During the year, we averaged about twelve thousand dollars on a, on a normal year, so, per month, I should say. So we're, we're seeing a hit there, but not as bad as what I would almost anticipate it to be, because we were, we were without for three to four months there, so we've definitely saw the numbers go back up once the machines opened back up, so. In the grand scheme with some of the, the fiscal numbers, the grand totals, we're averaging, I'm going to compare where we're at this year with last year's numbers and averaging things out. It really kind of tells a little bit better story. When we average, last year, the average monthly totals were about three hundred and eighty thousand. This year, we're looking at so far a total of four hundred and two thousand coming in, so if we project that out, we should see about a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase in the, in those revenues, so. It is, it's going to increase, but with those increases also our expenses are going up, so it, it's a balancing act, but it, it's good to see some positive numbers when COVID is going on the way it has, so we just keep saying, just support your businesses as much as you can here, so we're definitely seeing the effects of it. And our last sales tax numbers again were up for the collection period of it'd be October's numbers for sales tax, they were up about, again, about thirty-five hundred dollars. And that was October, so we haven't even gotten the November and December numbers, so those are going to, I suspect those are going to be up, because those are going to be our Christmas shopping season, so that's, it's positive, it's a good, good thing to hear, so. Questions?
Well, one of the benefits, I just want to go back on the Thompson Street Sewer Project, one of the benefits that we're going to see out of that, they're going to see the elimination of a lot of the pumps you see sitting around Princeton when we have heavy rains. Especially on the southwest in town, or the southeast west in town. So that's a, that'll be a huge, a huge ordeal for people to live where those pumps are. And when we do the paving, you know, this, this summer with our street program, whether it's our tax referendum money or motor fuel tax money, it's your tax money that's doing the work, so you're seeing your tax dollars at work regardless of the, of the funding here. And we're going to be doing Thompson Street as one of the projects this year, which will obviously include where we're putting that sanitary sewer, so it's all good. Bright future, part of our street work. Any other comments?
Any questions on the Thompson Street?
Thompson Street, I'm going to go to, well, mayor report, so I, I asked Hector, you know, to give a, give a COVID update for us.
Okay, um, as everyone knows, that the health department has been, been giving vaccinations to the community in Bureau County. What I can say right now is that we have received, we have received different shipments, the first shipment was done to Pfizer at December sixteenth, which was two hundred and sixty doses. Of those, of those two hundred and sixty doses, one hundred and ten actually went to Perry Memorial. The second shipment was on twelve twenty-two, which we received five hundred. Of those five hundred, we gave two hundred to Perry Memorial. The next shipments were, were two hundred, two hundred, and then the two hundred and sixty for the second dose of the Pfizer were also given to Perry Memorial and to St. Margaret's, the same equivalent of one ten and one fifty. So the first, the face, one A is what we've been trying to do as far as the guidelines that were set by the state in IDPH. And now, right now, we have given those shots to all the ones that in the community that wanted those shots. The governor stated that we are going into one B, and everybody knows the one B is a very big, big, I was going to say very large group. We are getting very small amounts of vaccines and we are starting with the, with the one B. Right now, we have not received any allocations yet, because it's a holiday for Markham and the King, so we'll see tomorrow. Once we do receive them, what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and set up electronic registration through online, and we'll post that up so that everybody that can will register on that. I know this poses a problem sometimes with people that are, do not have a computer, that are elderly. And with that, we are hoping that if they do call the health department, we'll be able to assist them in registering to be able to get the vaccine. Again, these are very, very small allocations, so we ask the public that to please be patient so that we can go ahead and, and get as many from each category of one B as possible. The category consists of law enforcement, first responders, all those sixty-five and older, central workers, manufacturing, agricultural, so the list is very, very large. And so we do ask that everybody be patient, that we value everybody here in the community and we'll give the vaccine and once you get it to everyone that wants it. The other thing is that everybody knows through the weekend that we, we entered into a tier one medications. This information can be found on the IDPH's website and in our Facebook page, as we post all that information as well. But for example, indoor service for, for dining will be limited to twenty-five guests, over twenty-five percent of capacity. And it also includes bars. There is no order in sitting or competing at the bars, the bars should be removed. Tables should be apart. And anybody who wants to go into the restaurants, especially should be wearing a mask until they're seated. From then on, the, the hostess or the waitress or waiters will go ahead and take the order and wear a mask until they're seated, and once you sit down and eat, you can go ahead and remove your mask. So if anybody wants more of that information, you can go ahead and, again, go into IDPH's website or to our Facebook page, it should be posted in there. There was a question that I, that was asked earlier of me this week, today, about gyms and facilities of recreational activities. Face coverings must be worn at all times in fitness centers, including while engaging individual exercise regardless of person or machine spacing. So that is what the tier one researches medications state, so I hope that answers your question. And if anybody doesn't know, we're also doing the vaccinations over at the fairgrounds, which offers a great spacing for us to go ahead and give the vaccination in one location and then have a time of fifteen minutes to be able to observe to see if there's any side effects to the person that's actually giving the vaccination, so.
Are you seeing any side effects?
So far, the only things that we have seen is sword arms. Some people might have felt like they kind of, they might have had a little chill. But other than that, we have not seen anything that's been really bad here, that I'm aware of.
Any questions? Thank you, Hector.
You're welcome.
Next on the item is, we talked a couple of weeks, last been longer than, I don't know, how long ago it's been, we talked about the Columbus Street, possibly closing Columbus Street for a thirty day trial to check on traffic flows, to see if it would make sense closing Columbus Street on a permanent basis. This is an idea that Ray Mayberry brought to the council a couple of years, two years ago. I thought it was a really good idea then, I think it's a good idea now, to give it a try to see what the, again, what the traffic flows is, so the idea would be to discuss it tonight, and if there's a consensus to go forward, we need an ordinance to close it, so we would have two readings in the month of February. During which time, we would try to educate the public as much as we can of what's going to occur, starting March first, essentially. Which would be, if this goes through, you'd be just simply barricading Columbus Street at Main Street to the parking lot, the first entrance to the parking lot in Columbus Street. We would make Columbus Street from that point all the way down to church, we would make that a two-way street. We would not allow street parking in the residential area, all those residences down there have lengthy driveways, they have driveway space. We would allow some parking for the businesses, the Second Land Salon and the Bike Place. We'd put a couple stalls there out in front, they would be facing west. The alley that runs behind Four Seasons, which I, I learned this week, is actually a street, it's called Field Street, I had no idea it's called Field Street. But that would remain one way. Nothing would change as far as that street is concerned, people would exit onto Columbus, they would head east. Again, that would be a two-way street at that point. So the, the idea then is just to close it, put these directors in place and see what happens. Give it thirty days, we might find out in a week or two that it doesn't work and we reopen Columbus, you know, we don't know until we try it. So basically, all I'm looking for tonight is a consensus to give this a shot, and if we do, we'll have a couple of ordinances, a first and second reading in February, we'll close it much in March. If it works out, then we will reopen Columbus April first, and that's when we'll start planning on what to do. And that's when we'll put everything together. Police and fire signed off on this project, the Princeton Historical Committee has signed off on this, the Princeton Arts Commission has signed off on this, they both want to be involved in this project if it works going forward. So there's a lot of interest there as far as what we can do with that street if the traffic flows do not pose a significant problem, so. That's what I'm looking for, consensus, we have a consensus?
I think it's an idea that has value, I think these we should give it a try.
Alright, so we have a consensus, so again, our first meeting in February, we'll have the first reading to close Columbus Street for thirty, no longer than a thirty day period. Well, thank you for that. And also, another idea that has been discussed, and I want to throw it out for the council as well tonight, you know, we have, we promote Princeton through tourism regularly, Quad Cities area, Peoria area, we get a lot of people to come, we try to get people to come to Princeton to shop Princeton. And winter has always caused us a problem, Ray Mayberry, year after year after year, has asked businesses to please clear their, their sidewalks, now since he started doing that, we've had a lot more businesses clear the sidewalks, but there's a lot of businesses that still don't. And we have some empty storefronts and those owners aren't clearing their sidewalks in front of their buildings, so we get people coming to Princeton and they can't make it from store to store because, or they can, but they have to tread, they have to walk over, you know, piles of snow, so the idea is that we have a snow blower, it's a thirty inch snow blower, and the street department would handle this. When we get snows, there are discretion on when they go out, but they would do basically two slots on each side of the street, up and down, up and down, up and down, up and down, on both sides of the street. And then every fifteen feet or so, they would put an access point out to the curb so people can get, so businesses would still be responsible to clear a path to their door, and they would still be responsible openly to go out and clear off near the curb, get the snow out of the street, and then we'll come by and we'll take care of it, but the, what this does is basically just, it, it opens up our sidewalk, it's a clear path. It's just down the center of the sidewalk, that's all it is, we're not going around any trash can receptacles or benches or tares or anything like that. And that's, that's pretty much the idea, it's not a solution to the, to the issue, but it does help, and I'm hoping that businesses see what we're doing and they, you know, the ones that don't do it, will start doing it, you know, helping us out, so.
We can send Ray down and talk.
I'll take Pete with me.
But I think the snow blower idea is a good one, as not only to clear a path, but also just to provide an element of safety on those parts of the sidewalk that had not been shovel in the past to get some ice off of there, so it it's a shame we have to go to this level, but I think it's important that we do it right, so.
Anybody have, does anybody? You know, again, it's not a solution, but it's something to start out with and let's hope that, you know, maybe we get to a point where we don't have to do it anymore, but I don't know how it happened, but it might, so, alright. So Quentin, you're, you're pretty good on that project. Also, one other thing, as far as the Perry OSF, anybody that's interested, if you pick up your council packet tonight, there's a very good summary that Pete put together of the public hearing that was held two weeks ago. You can read through that, and the video of the meeting has been online on the city's website since, well, two weeks ago tomorrow, so you can go online and you can watch the public hearing and the council meeting as well. Any old business? Any new business? Any public comments? Okay, I entertain the motion to adjourn and reconvene.
I move that we adjourn our regular reading this evening and reconvene for our next council meeting on Monday, February first, twenty twenty-one, seven o'clock at City Hall.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, all roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Did you say it already?
Yeah.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman. Mayor Querem.
Aye, this meeting is adjourned and thank you all for attending.